This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for February 16th, 2021. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's Disaster Proclamation, Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and 5ILCS 120/7E, and the determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Crishell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner.
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator John Cokely.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Police Chief Ray Tirano.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer.
Here.
And Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. We are now going to say the Pledge of Allegiance here at City Hall. I invite you to say it along with us at home. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and for God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda, we would like to recognize that this is Engineers Week. We have several talented engineers who are staff. We would certainly like to thank them in particular, but in general, engineers do quite a bit for us that we'd like to recognize. So, the proclamation reads, Engineers Week, February 21st to 27th, 2021. Whereas engineers have built the foundation for progress and development and contributed greatly to society by turning ideas into reality, engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative, innovative ways to meet societal needs. And whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters, cleaning up the environment, and assuring safe, clean, and efficient sources of energy, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future. And whereas engineers are changing the world all the time, they dream up creative, practical solutions and work with teams of smart, inspiring people to invent, design, and create things that matter. And whereas National Engineers Week was established in 1951 to help increase public understanding of the engineering profession, and as we imagine tomorrow, engineers will be at the heart of the solutions to combat climate change, secure cyberspace, develop vaccines, and make the world a better place for us all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim February 21st through February 27th, 2021, as Engineers Week, and applaud the engineers working for and with the City of Warrenville for the significant contributions they make to enhance the quality of life for all Warrenville citizens by providing for their health, safety, and welfare. Thank you, engineers. And next, we have a guest of honor this evening, former Alderman Fred Bavir. We wanted to say thank you for his 15 years of being on the City Council. Thank him for his devotion and love of the City of Warrenville. Thank him for his friendship, and just recognize the fact that we miss seeing him every Monday night. We wish him well, and we really appreciate the time that we've had with you and the things that you've contributed over the years to the city, and we know you will continue to contribute even if you're not on the council. So, if you'd like to come to the dais, we have a certificate of appreciation for you, Fred, as well as a key to the city. And of course, you're free to add something to the meeting.
All right, I got it all. It's been a great pleasure working all the years with all the, not a lot of different Aldermen, but quite a few, you know, the same, and I enjoyed every minute of it. And keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Come back anytime. All right, next on our agenda, we have the FY 2022 Budget Presentation from the Community Development Department by our Community and Economic Development Director, Ron Menzer. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you once again for the opportunity to provide this annual presentation. Hopefully, you'll find some of the information that I provide tonight will be of some value as you work through the review and decision process for the upcoming fiscal year 22 budget that staff will be presenting. Okay. See if I can get this thing to move. Oops. Sorry. Need to go back. Okay. Right, so as in past years, it's my goal to give you some perspective on where we're at now, what we've been dealing with, and what we expect to accomplish in fiscal year 2021. And then I'll move on to give you an overview and tie back to our budget proposal of what we expect to accomplish from a community development perspective in fiscal year 22, and specifically talk about some of the decision packages that we've prepared and submitted with our proposed budget, and then we'll end with any questions that the City Council may have. I think everybody would agree that when I made this presentation last year, it was a much different economic climate. I don't think anybody would have expected that what we've been dealing with actually would have happened. Despite all the good or all the ugly and bad things that have happened in the community from an economic and community development perspective over the past year, there has been some very good, positive things that have and continue to proceed through the, happen in the community during that period. But I'm going to start with talking about what I think is probably from a community and economic development perspective, the biggest downside of the pandemic and the worst thing that's happened in the community, and that's really the dramatic impact that COVID and the related social distancing restrictions have had on businesses in our community, and specifically those businesses that generate a lot of revenue for the community and allow the city to provide service, and also add to kind of the social fabric of the community in a meaningful way. The three business categories I'm talking about are hotels, entertainment facilities, gyms, food and beverage establishments. So, what is really happening in these communities and what in these business categories, and what can we look for? Oops. Hotels. At this point, all of the hotels are really happening in the, are primarily related to leisure travel. There is really virtually no business travel happening, and as a result, the occupancy in our current hotels have fallen off dramatically. Pre-pandemic occupancy rates were in the neighborhood of about 70% on average. At this point in time, they're much closer to the 30% range. During the pandemic, our new, one of our newest hotels was closed for an extended period of time. Fortunately, that hotel is now reopened and operating. Overall, I would say that based on the recent inquiries we received from different hotel operator representatives and real estate investment organizations, that there is going to be a push to either change the flags, the brand, or repurpose some of the hotels in the community. So, it's not clear going forward that we'll always have six hotels operating in our community, and if we do have six hotels, they might be operating as a different type of hotel than they are today. Looking forward, I think it's also important to note that most industry experts in this geographic region don't expect business travel to rebound in any meaningful way until the third quarter of 2021. What that means, that most likely it's not going to be until 2024, we get back to hotel occupancy and rates get back to pre-COVID levels. So, we got, we have a while to go to kind of weather the storm from a hotel perspective. Our entertainment facilities and our Lifetime Fitness Facility certainly have been impacted. There's been closures, in some cases, on and again, off again closures that have, these businesses have experienced based on COVID-related restrictions. At this point in time, Lifetime Fitness is essentially open to kind of pre-pandemic, somewhat pre-pandemic hours and operations. Just at the end of January, the main event Family Entertainment Facility reopened. They could only have 200 people in the facility at any given time. Just recently, they were able to begin again serving food and beverages at the facility, and as a result, they're, they're actually doing pretty good right now, now that they're back open. Seems like there might be a pent-up demand in the, in the, from a consumer's perspective to get out and do something like what they have to offer at that facility. Unfortunately, however, the theater is a different story. Theater has been, was closed, then opened, and then towards the early fall area was closed again and has remained closed for much, or for all of, much of the fall, all the winter so far, and is still closed. In recent conversations we've had with the District Manager for Regal Theaters, they are apparently committed to reopening the Cantor of the Theater, but unfortunately, they don't have a specific timeline on when that will occur. The theater is going to be apparently reopened in conjunction with the reopening of all the rest of the Regal Theaters throughout the entire United States, and that won't happen until COVID restrictions in all states make sense to reopen theaters, meaning that it needs to be economically viable to reopen a theater based on the restrictions that are in place, number one, and number two, the theater really needs to have a clear understanding and commitment from the large movie studios that they will be consistently releasing a stream of new movies for the theater to show. Without that new stream of movies on a consistent basis, it's their perspective that it doesn't make sense to reopen permanently. Then finally, last but not least, the business category that has been extremely impacted, obviously, has been our food and beverage establishments. The food and beverage establishments that did not have a well-developed carryout business component before the pandemic, did not have a outdoor seating area, did not have a drive-through, and really focused on full-service, sit-down-type service, are the restaurant businesses that have suffered the worst during the pandemic. Those that have quick service, carryout business, a drive-through and outdoor seating are the businesses, the restaurant and food and beverage establishments that have weathered the storm the best. Unfortunately, there has been a couple of closures, restaurant closures in the city that seem to be permanent. The Skippy's Restaurant in Cantor on the east side of Winfield Road, south of the Towaway, seems to be closed permanently. There, there's a real estate development firm that has that property under contract and is proposing some redevelopment on that property going forward. In addition, the Indian Cuisine-based restaurant in the southwest corner of the Cantor Development called Masala closed earlier this year, and there are no plans to reopen that facility. Looking forward, it is very possible that a couple of the other national branded restaurants in the Cantor Project may end up closing, not necessarily because of the performance of their Warrenville facilities, but because these national brands have a lot of facilities throughout the country, and they were struggling financially before the pandemic as a, as corporations, and the pandemic certainly hasn't helped that situation. So, it's very possible that they may close some or all of their facilities, and that would certainly impact Warrenville if that actually happens sometime in the next year or two. So, that's the worst news. The bad, bad news, the bad outcomes so far this year are related to, first off, reduced commercial development activity that's happening in the community. Last year, when I made this presentation, we were estimating that we would experience about $51 million worth of new construction activity and investment in the community in fiscal 21, primarily because there's been basically a, all commercial retail-type projects have have been put on hold, called COVID hold. Construction activity in the community will not reach $51 million this fiscal year. At this point in time, we're projecting that that number will be closer to about $43 million worth of new construction activity in fiscal 21. Identified on the screen is a few of the more noteworthy commercial projects that are indefinitely on hold with no clear schedule to move forward with any of those projects. A lot of the commercial projects are waiting to see what happens with the greater economy and what type of consumer purchasing habits will change as a result of COVID, or have changed and will continue to be in place after COVID subsides. And then another challenge that we've continued to deal with in the Community Development Department is continuing changes from a staffing perspective. There were a couple retirements that happened in our Building and Code Enforcement Division late in, at the end of 2020 calendar year. One of those happened much sooner than what we had originally anticipated or understood was going to happen. We've gone through a, a pretty exhaustive recruitment process for both of those positions. Unfortunately, we were only able to fill one of those positions. We're still working on how to fill the, the second position, so that's a challenge. In addition to that, just recently, we had a couple of unexpected resignations in the department, and we're just starting the process to recruit and refill those positions, which will take time and effort and energy away from other projects and core responsibilities that we've been trying to move forward in this fiscal year. Moving on to the good, though, there's been a lot of good, as I mentioned, from my perspective. Residential construction activity has been one of the elements of the economy that has remained very strong throughout the COVID pandemic, and that's certainly the case in the City of Warrenville. The four high-quality multifamily residential projects that the city approved in the last year and a half all continued to be built throughout the entire COVID pandemic. Two of those projects have actually got to a point where portions of them have begun to accept new residents and tenants. From a single-family development standpoint, last year, when I made this presentation, we were expecting that we would issue building permits for 68 new single-family homes in fiscal 21. We're nine months into fiscal 21, and we've already issued 68 single-family building permits. By the end of this calendar year, we're expecting that, or fiscal year, we're expecting that we'll have issued 88 single-family building permits, including less two building permits in the Stafford Place redevelopment project back behind City Hall and the Warrenville Library. Some other economic development wins that are certainly worth noting this evening include the construction and occupancy of both the new Thorntons and Cullers facilities out near the intersection of Route 59 and Duke Parkway down in the southwest district. Then, quite a significant, or project in terms of size and stature, but I think one that's very noteworthy to the community that I wanted to make special mention of is the Evelyn Eve Wine Shop that has been opened and persevered through COVID in the old bank building near the intersection of Tavia and Butterfield Road. That little business, I think, has a pretty dramatic, from my perspective, dramatic impact, positive impact on the character and perceived vitality of that building and an area of that community. I think it's going to, it already has helped attract another desirable business, new business into that building, and I think it will help attract other desirable private business into that area of our community going forward. From a kind of a public community, city standpoint, the City Council has approved three specific programs or policy initiatives this, this current fiscal year that I think will have a lasting and meaningful impact on existing food and beverage establishments, and also make the community more desirable for future business, community, food and beverage establishments to locate in the community. That includes the establish, quick establishment implementation of a temporary outdoor seating program early on in the pandemic that allowed our businesses to expand and implement new outdoor seating amenities for their food and beverage establishments without a whole lot of cost or special city, city approval processes that would have normally taken more time and energy to work through. And then we also have developed, and the City Council approved, the establishment of a fee waiver and revenue sharing program for new food and beverage establishments in the town civics area that will help ultimately reimburse them for some of the costs that they incur to remodel existing spaces to accommodate new food and beverage establishments. And then finally, last but not least, at the end of the year, calendar year 21, 20, I should say, the City Council approved a waiver of fiscal 22 liquor license renewal fees for our food and beverage establishments. This past fiscal year, we've been very busy moving forward and advancing some pretty noteworthy, important community enhancement projects, starting with the city's acquisition of the former Citgo property, now referred to that as Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two. After four years of negotiation, we were able to close on that property this past summer, and we have already begun taking active steps to move forward with all the different actions that are necessary to remediate that property and put it, make it, put it in a condition that would support, safely support both private redevelopment and public open space improvements on the property. We negotiated a bill of 66 that allows us to close out their outstanding lust incident in exchange for a $90,000 financial contribution. We've already removed the remaining underground storage tanks on the property and all related gas pumping equipment that happened at the end of 2020. We've secured a commitment from the, both the Illinois EPA and the US EPA for a revolving loan fund commitment that will help pay for much of the non-petroleum-based remediation costs that the City Council or the city incurs on that property. Some other walkability and trail enhancement projects that I think are noteworthy, and we've made some significant advance on implementing, include the Route 59 multi-use path improvements that the city received a grant for this past calendar year, back last summer. It was a $771,000 grant that will help offset some of the costs, or a big portion of the costs the city would ultimately incur if it ultimately determines to, that it will implement a 10-foot-wide asphalt trail on each side of Route 59 between the Tavia Road on the north and Meadow Avenue on the south. We completed the preliminary engineering and are well into the final engineering for the Illinois Prairie Path Trailhead Project. As well, we completed the preliminary engineering or just beginning the final engineering process for the Mack Road Bridge and Trail Enhancement Project. And then finally, last but not least, there were a number of private development projects that are ongoing in the community that have implemented some very important trail improvements and trail connections that are identified in the city's various bike and pedestrian implementation plans. Those include 10-foot-wide path along the frontage of the Lexington, or along the front, Route 59 frontage of the Everton Project, and a couple of connections between the, the path improvements on the Everton property and the Illinois Prairie Path, the 10-foot-wide multi-use trail that was constructed through the Lexington Trace Project that extends from Route 56 on the north all the way down to the new Duke Parkway Route 59 intersection. And then finally, last but not, or three new connections between the sidewalks and trails in the Cantor Project that connects those sidewalks and trails to the DuPage County West Branch Regional Trail along the west, east side of the DuPage River. Those connections were made by the Riverview West Apartment Project. While COVID has had a lot of negative impacts, there have been some positive customer service enhancements that the Community Development Department has implemented as a result of COVID that I think are worth noting. We refined, improved, and expanded our online permit application process. Since we did that, 90% of all the permit applications that we now receive are submitted through that online process, and overall, since we've done that, there's been just over 600 permits that have been applied using that system. We implemented early on in the pandemic, a very user-friendly virtual inspection process that allowed all the contractors that were performing construction activities in the community to continue to move forward with their projects, even though there were some pretty significant social distancing challenges to, to deal with and continue to be dealt with. So far, since we implemented that, we've conducted over 500 virtual inspections, and that represents about 25% of inspections that we have conducted since we implemented that system. And finally, last but not least, just like tonight's meeting is a virtual meeting, the Plan Commission has been able to continue to conduct business by implementing virtual Plan Commission meetings. Since we've begun that process, we've had 11 virtual Plan Commission meetings, so continue the plan, the work of the Plan Commission during COVID. Looking forward into fiscal year 22, want to touch on what I see as kind of the priorities for the department, both from a private development processing standpoint, but also from a policy development and policy development and moving forward with community enhancement projects, and then kind of relate that back to and identify where we've developed some decision packages that we presented to the administration and Finance Department as part of our department proposed budget for fiscal twenty-two. So there's really five, I'm sorry about that, I'm not sure why that keeps doing that. There's five regulatory program enhancements that we've included in our proposed work program for the department next year that we fully expect to, to move forward and help advance, including the rental, making a decision on whether or not, facilitating a decision on whether or not the city will move forward with the rental registration and inspection program. We, we intend to implement some code amendments that will carry over some of our temporary outdoor seating permitting processes in to make them more permanent, basically making it easier and less cumbersome for our food and beverage establishments to expand and maintain outdoor seating improvements in the community. We also have developed a decision package that if ultimately approved, will provide a, some seed funding for a new, what I'm calling the TIF Three Public Property Business Enhancement Program. In the last few months, we've received a number of inquiries from both existing businesses and new business and a business group that wants to potentially open an additional new business in the Old Town Civic Center Suburb area. And as part of their business operations, they've identified a need for some improvements to some of the public property that's adjacent to their property. These are businesses that would be located in, that are or would be located in some of the more traditional buildings located in the Old Town Civic Center Suburb area that are built right up close to the front property lines or side property lines and are, have direct access to public property. So we've developed a, a decision package that would provide some seed funding that if ultimately approved would support the development implementation of a, a new program that the city would implement that would make it possible where we could review requests for improvements to the public property for these types of businesses and actually provide funding for those improvements going forward and support those businesses. About a year ago, we, the city adopted a complete streets policy. We had hoped in this fiscal year to develop and, and formalize an implementation plan for that policy that would help the city ensure that it implements that policy in a manner that's not just fiscally responsible, but it also ensures that all of the future road reconstruction and new construction projects are done in a manner that carefully considers not just the needs of an automobile, but also the needs of both pedestrians and bicyclists. We're not going to be able to get to that implementation policy this fiscal year, so we're proposing to carry that over into next fiscal year. And then finally, we're looking to improve, formalize, expand the city's outreach efforts to our new residents with all the new residential that's occurring in the community. There's going to be potentially thousands of residents moving into Warrenville over the coming years. And we'd like to develop a more detailed program for reaching out and connecting with these residents, helping them feel welcome as new residents of the city of Warrenville, helping them feel that they made a good investment and decision to move to Warrenville, helping them understand what Warrenville has to offer, how to engage and take advantage of all the amenities and events that are occurring in the community. So that's something we hope to, to refine and move forward in the upcoming fiscal year. We expect that there will be a significant level of private new development. Again, it probably will be more weighted towards new residential development than commercial development. But we do fully expect that some of the commercial projects that are identified in the screen, the redevelopment of the Speedway Project, the High Point Mixed Use Flex Building down on Ferry Road west of the Prairie Path, a new corporate facility for elite ambulance out in the northwest corner of the Warrenville Industrial Park, and the redevelopment of the Skippies Project, or Skippies Property and Windfield Road are commercial projects that will happen. In total, we're projecting that the total construction value that will occur in the community next fiscal year will be closer to twenty-eight million dollars. Again, a big part of that will be weighted towards continued residential development. We fully expect that all the existing multifamily projects, the apartment projects that are under construction will be completed by the end of next fiscal year. We're projecting that there will be, we will issue about seventy-eight or eighty new single family building permits next fiscal year, and we'll process multiple new townhouse projects that are being proposed in multiple places throughout the community at this point in time. Some of the community, or some of the more important community enhancement projects that we fully expect to advance next year, and we've developed some decision packages to provide funding to allow us to do that, include additional actions related to Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two. First, we fully expect that we will finalize the development, city council endorsement of a more detailed development plan for the property, that redevelopment plan is necessary because it will inform our cleanup plans, make sure that our cleanup plans are both consistent with how the property will be used, but are also economically or financially responsible. We don't want to be spending a bunch of money cleaning up things to standards that don't make sense for how we want to use the property going forward. We've developed this decision package that would provide funding that would allow the city to move forward with removing all the asbestos and other hazardous building materials on the property and then demolishing the buildings and structures on the property. We've also have it in our work program to work with the Illinois EPA's leaking underground storage tank program to define and then implement a detailed cleanup plan for the remaining, a remediation plan, I should say, for the remaining petroleum-based contamination on the site. And then finally, last but not least, we've developed a decision package that would provide funding that would allow us to do environmental, the environmental engineering and reporting necessary to kind of set the stage for a remediation project that would cover all of the non-lust or leaking underground storage tank petroleum-based contaminants on the property. That future heavy, what I call the heavy metal soil contamination cleanup project would be done in a future fiscal year, like twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, based on funding availability. We expect to finalize final engineering in fiscal twenty-two for the Illinois Prairie Path Trailhead Project, go out to bid and begin construction of that project in the fall of twenty twenty-two. We've developed a decision package to provide the funding necessary to complete all that. We've also developed a decision package to, that would allow us to begin property acquisition, property and easement acquisition efforts on the Mack Road Bridge Replacement Trail Enhancement Project. And then finally, last but not least, we've provided, developed a decision package that will provide some seed money that would allow us late in fiscal twenty twenty-two to begin preliminary engineering design for the future installation of those multi-use trails on Route fifty-nine that I spoke of earlier. So that's it, that's a lot, but that's our review of this year and next year.
Well, thank you, Ron, for, as always, a thorough presentation. We certainly have some issues to deal with, but we also have some things to look forward to coming up. So I appreciate your highlighting all of those things so that we can get them due consideration. I'll ask the council now if they have any questions or comments for you, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
I just wanted, first off, to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you for reminding us of a lot of the good, because there was a lot of good this year, and I think a good reminder that everything wasn't pure pandemic all the time. Just one question, when I look at the twenty-two work plan, there's the finalizing engineering design and block grant funding for the Summer Lake Courts improvements. Is, could you just, is that under a different name within the presentation? Or could you just give a quick overview of what that line item is?
We, we applied for, I think, you know, maybe a year and a half ago, we applied for block grant funding that will allow for, that will help fund the rehabilitation of the square courts in the Summer Lake subdivision. The square courts are generally located south of Batavia Road, west of fifty-nine, closer to the Batavia Road corridor, and it's some of the more dense areas of the Summer Lake subdivision. And it's, it meets the, the kind of the economic criteria that the Community Development Block Grant Program has established that would allow us to qualify for the funding that they make available to improve those economically challenged areas. We're funding, based on everything that's going on in the city and the Community Development Department and in the Public Works Department, we determined that we couldn't advance that project any, in a material degree, but we fully, you know, move it towards construction, I guess is what I'm saying, next fiscal year. But we fully expect that we'll be working towards finalizing the engineering design for those improvements so that they could be bid out and constructed in the following year. A lot of that work will be led by the Public Works Department. The engineers that work in the Community Development Department will help support that process, but it will be led primarily by the engineer, or by the Public Works Department.
All right, thank you, no other questions.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Ashauer.
Excellent presentation and a pretty aggressive agenda.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Berry.
That was a great presentation. I'm happy to see that some of the hotels will be able to stick around and maybe they have some new ideas as, as to how to kind of reinvent themselves. That's, that's very good news. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Dafalos.
Yes, thank you. I, this is overwhelming in a really wonderful way, and I know it's been a tough year, but I agree with what's been said in the comments, that this is a lovely balance of, of our challenges and, and our projects that are succeeding quite, quite well. I particularly was excited to see on this, on this presentation, this regulatory program enhancements, that some of these things we've talked about for a long time, rental registration, the outreach, complete streets, and a few other things that are finally bubbling up to be on the radar screen, to get into these top-tier slots with community development. I, I think this is great. I am pleasantly surprised, I didn't anticipate this, so this is really wonderful. And in looking at the new development, at the residential developments, and thinking back to when I came on as an alderman, this was just not even a dream, this wasn't even thought of. I mean, I, I am shocked at how much has happened in this area, and it's, it's so appreciative. I mean, these developers, to my knowledge, aren't having a lot of trouble filling up these apartments and condos and townhomes and the whole thing. And so I'm just, but it's so much work. So I just want to commend you and your whole staff. This is monumental that we have come this far, and I just, wow, I'm just really happy, I guess. My only question is the seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant for the Route fifty-nine sidewalks, does that have an expiration date or does that have an expiration date?
Yeah, it's generally like a five-year funding window is what they apply those funds for. We're in the process of trying to get a more firm understanding of when that funding might be available could have an impact on whether or not this remains a decision package that might need to be funded this year or is it something we can push out?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Goodman.
Thank you, yes, I appreciate the presentation. A couple of areas that I had questions about. When you, when you talk about the new resident outreach program, that seems to me like a very time-sensitive program. I see you have it on tier two in the decision, the developmental, sorry, in the department work plan. And I was wondering why it wasn't a tier one, you know, given the fact that we've had many new residents already start moving into town, and it, it just seems like the kind of thing that if we're going to do it at all, we need to have done it yesterday.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that it would have been something that would have been desirable to have in place already. But to answer your question, in discussing it both internally in the Community Development Department, then externally with other departments that would be definitely involved in the development and implementation of such a process and program, there are just too many other higher priority projects that are more time-sensitive and pressing at this point in time from the staff perspective.
Okay, likewise, right under that T two-nine, the TIF Three Public Property Improvement Program, I haven't seen your presentation about that decision package yet, of course, but given, I guess I would say how much in the whole TIF Three is already, it's hard for me to think of a financially responsible way to structure a program like that to spend TIF money on right now. So in terms of the urgency, wouldn't we want to, I suppose, hope for a somewhat more financially suitable moment in the life of TIF Three to do a program like that?
I don't have specific answers on the status of the TIF revenues, because that is something that we're actively reviewing with the Administration and Finance Department as part of the internal staff development of the proposed budget. What I can tell you, though, is that there is a, you know, a perceived need anyway by some existing businesses, and one proposed, which I would consider a very desirable business for what would be normally TIF improvements to be performed to support their businesses, help them, if they're existing, to remain in business and hopefully expand, or in terms of the new business that's looking at the old bank unit in the, the old bank building, create a new, pretty, pretty desirable business. And it really does rely on some external improvements. So the thought process is that for a relatively small investment from the city, we might be able to help existing businesses stay around, desirable businesses stay around, maybe expand, and then help attract and support new businesses to locate in the Old Town TIF District, which up until this point in time, we've spent a lot of money on public improvements. We've got essentially residential development, which has been good quality redevelopment, but we haven't been able to realize a whole lot of commercial development, and that is a priority in this. So I understand you haven't heard the whole presentation, and there'll be more discussion of it, but we're not talking about a massive amount of dollars being allocated initially, anyway.
Okay, well, I'll look forward to more information on that, and of course, I can be convinced. But my initial reaction is extreme skepticism, just knowing our city's financial condition, the TIF Three financial condition in particular, and knowing that, you know, putting these things in tier one and tier two has to do with timeliness. So when, when we know that because of COVID, in large part, but also other choices that we've made, you know, our, our financial resources are really, really stretched right now, and we have every expectation of- And we have every expectation of improvements in the future when we might be able to do more things with the dollars that we will then have that we can't afford to do right now. And then I guess my last question was in Tier Three. Just to describe, it says, "Develop a zoning overlay district for Old Town Civic Center Subarea." I know that's a low tier item, but could you talk about that a little bit?
The, the city's existing zoning ordinance is what I would describe as a traditional suburban zoning ordinance developed at a time and in a, you know, during a time when development like what you might see along Route 59 was kind of the predominant form of suburban development, requires large setbacks, big lots, lots of parking, building setback off of the road. It doesn't really, the current, the city's current zoning ordinance doesn't really support or make it easy for mixed-use development to happen in a form that I would describe as more kind of a traditional village, community form, which is smaller lots, mix of land uses, share, lot of shared parking, use of, on-street parking, buildings up closer to the street. Kind of the, the, the area that I would describe around City Hall and the Batavia Road Bank Building, and then some of the more traditional development down by the Batavia Road, River Road intersection is the type of development that I think we would want to try to make easier, make it easier for it to happen. And that could be accomplished through developing an overlay zoning district that would be applied to property and would give the owners and potential future users of that property an option. They wouldn't have to use the overlay district. They could just use the property in accordance with the, our standard zoning ordinance, or they could use the property and take advantage of the rules and regulations that were provided in the overlay, overlay district. The development of this type of district for the Old Town Civic Center, or specific areas of the Old Town Civic Center Subarea is identified in the Old Town Civic Center Subarea Plan as one of the implementation actions that, that the city should be moving forward with. And this has been something that's been in our work program for a couple of years, but another thing that we just haven't found the time or, or opportunity to actually create. But I, I do think from a professional standpoint would be very valuable to the community long-term, to those areas of the community long-term.
Okay, thank you very much, Ron. I appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kuschel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Mensah. I won't repeat all the good things I've already said. I agree with them all. One thing I would mention, though, that stuck out when, when listening to this presentation was the diversity in all these developments. And I think that's key, especially as we can see now and things that are outside of our control. You know, no one expected a pandemic. But I think the ability to keep moving forward with, with certain projects when other ones might, might not be able to, I think that's key to keep moving forward. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Mensah, for the department budget presentation. I appreciate it and think that it's spot-on for the situation that we are involved in. Look forward to like nosing out of this situation and do some of the, the good things that, that you identified. Couple of quick questions. I know the police had a, or the police department had a package a couple of years ago that was introduced to the new residents. And I wonder if that is still active? Because playing off of Alderman Goodman's mention of, you know, creating touchpoints for the new population, I think, you know, something is appropriate to make sure we welcome them and let them know of all the characteristics, attribution, opportunities in our city. And I just want, if the chief is still on the line, I wanted to ask him whether they still have that, that program, whether we might want to take another look at it and move it.
Alderman Widener, yes, we still do have it. Some of the information may be outdated. This is something that because of COVID for the last year or so, we haven't been able to make those face-to-face connections. But we'll definitely be willing to work with Community Development, share what we've already put together. And, excuse me, we may have to update some things in there as far as businesses that have gone out of business and what have you. But yeah, we can, we can definitely do.
Yeah, on an, on an interim basis, that might be, you know, something that we could, you know, spend some amount of time on without, you know, moving the item to Tier One. We could, you know, kind of be cognizant of how much time and energy and what budgetary demands something like this would have. But I would think that we might be able to, you know, modify and improvement, improve it until we get to the full-fledged Tier Two item that Director Mensah introduced. Because if, if I'm not wrong, I think there's probably about 4,000 new people that will be coming into one of those on an appropriate estimate, Director Mensah?
Well, with all the, the projects that have already been approved and are underway in the community collectively, those projects are estimated to generate about 2,300 people.
Okay, I'm a little off then on my estimate. I thought it was higher. But still, that's a significant number of people. It'd be good to have some kind of touchpoint with the city, you know, as they, as they move in, whatever, whatever we could, you know, pull together with, together with the police department's program. I don't know if anybody has any other comments on that, that topic, but my second question is, I thought the Complete Streets Implementation Program was policy. I didn't realize that we could evolve out of it once we had, had it approved by the council. And I guess I'm a little bit surprised because I thought, I thought we had moved it on it as a policy the city was pursuing.
It is definitely an adopted and endorsed policy by the city council, but actually how that policy was implemented, not, part of, part of the big challenge with implementing the policy is funding. So trying to figure out how to connect implementation with funding in a responsible way is a big part of the implementation plan that we need to develop.
I, I just hope we're taking a, a close look at that because I think one thing that the pandemic has brought out is the need for people to use alternative transportation for their errands and also their outdoor recreation pursuits. We really see an increase in the amount of people using the path, sidewalk, and the networks that we've been, you know, building over the last several years. I think these components really tie closely to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So I, I just hope that we take a close look at each and every, everyone. And, and, you know, sometimes I think, you know, you have to, you know, extend, you know, some, some funding where you may not, you know, otherwise think that it's, that it's all quite there and make a, make a jump because it is so important to the, the community. So I just, I guess, was initially very excited about the Complete Streets program. And I guess I'm disappointed that it's not being enacted to any, any degree or to any prioritized, you know, street improvements. So take that for, for what you may. And then I was wondering whether or not there's any department that is beginning to address some of the parking situations and some of the outdated, or the older subdivisions that we've had in the, in the city. I know we've heard recently through the letters of the editor and, and so forth that there's, you know, some tight situations with parking. And I just wonder whether or not there's a department that's looking into doing what we can to, you know, provide adequate parking for, for people who are buying homes here.
It's my, my understanding, based on the internal communications that we had, is that the, right now, the police department is leading that effort, specifically as it relates to the Thornwell Sub, that, that's Thornwell, the, the Winchester, thank you, sorry, the Winchester subdivision and some of the, the concerns and complaints that have been raised about the situation out in that neighborhood.
Okay. And then lastly, I'm really excited about the new businesses that I think will blend in so well with the, the natural characteristics and elements of the city of Warrenville. So I, I just think that's great. Whatever you've done to communicate and attract those businesses, I think they'll be a great addition, taking advantage of the great views we have of the river and the natural characteristics and highlights of the surrounding forest preserves and Fermilab, you know, as our neighbor to the, to the west. So I look forward to, you know, having those nice businesses arrive here and take advantage of the natural characteristics that Warrenville has to offer, too. So thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Alderman. And just a, a quick reminder to everyone that if you're not speaking, please remain on mute. We had quite a bit of interference from background noise during that discussion. So it's very distracting. So please remember to mute yourself if you're not speaking. And we'll go to Alderman Wilson.
I'd just like to say it was a great presentation. And I like the idea that we are not the same as we were five years ago or eight years ago. And we have to look at the different things and a different viewpoint. And I'm, I'm helping, happy to see that we're, have to look at the existing business that we have and see what we can do to help them. It's good to have new businesses, but we don't want to lose the existing businesses by being so wrapped up on one aspect. So thank you very much. It was a great presentation. We have an awful good future here. But let's be proactive with some of the things that we're talking about. You know, we can't do it all. So let's be selective about what we do and then do it right. So thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay, Ron, now just go get it all done, okay? On that happy note, and you will do it well, I'm sure, we will move on to the part of our meeting that has been set aside for citizens' comments. We have three opportunities for citizens to comment at our meetings, either by email before the meeting, calling into the meeting while it's in progress, or attending the meeting while it's also in progress. So we'll start with someone who has come this evening to have a statement. Would you like to come to the podium? George, come on up. Introduce yourself and speak your piece.
George Wonsome, 29W463 Amber Lane. I'd like to comment on the Ferry Project that's going to be taking place with the new row houses or the, you know, the hearings that are going to be going forward on it. I'm not really sure what's been approved and not approved. You know, Mike, I'll get, let me go back one, something, say something positive. Yes, Ron, I agree, the Fortunes is awesome, and the Culvers, too. So I'm very appreciative of that. The, you know, my experience, I've been here about nine years now. And I love Warrenville. It's a great community. And it's a, it's a charming city. And, you know, I've had some differences with some of the developments that we've had over the past several years. And I'm still in disagreement with what's been done with some of the big projects, mainly Everton and the project by the library. I think we lost some of our charm in those projects. And now with this, the new development on Ferry Road that we're talking about, I'm in agreement that we have to do something with that parking lot. Can't have a parking lot to sit in there and collecting dust and weeds. But I am concerned, I'm a concerned citizen that this idea of row houses, and I can already see that reading through the documents here that the setbacks have been reduced from 30 feet, 25 feet. I drove through Everton, you know, again, emergency vehicles would have a difficult time if they had to bring in anything big into there. It's not a very pleasant sight to see, driving by it almost every day that I do, going to work. So I'm just commenting as a concerned citizen that this new project might have some of the same visual thing. And I'm concerned that the Planning Commission and the council are looking at quantity and dollars before quality for our wonderful community. And, you know, it's, you know, I'm in agreement with some kind of a townhome. And I just want something that's going to be attractive and represent our community the proper way. Because the last two projects that I talked about just recently, I don't think that they did. I think that they brought us down a step as far as I appeal. They might bring in the dollars, they might bring in, you know, and I know they're going to sell and be rented, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of people that need multifamily housing. I think we deserve, you know, as citizens of Warrenville, attractive sites as well as sites that offer multifamily housing to a community and other people. The other concern is like was spoken about is, yeah, okay, 2,500 more residents, raising our population by 20%, our infrastructure. I know the new row houses isn't going to bring a lot of people. It's going to bring, you know, 150, 200 people, I would estimate. But still, are we really, really doing the right things with our schools, our, our police department, fire department, all the things that are necessary to be valuable resources to the community? So again, I'm a very concerned citizen based on what I've seen the past few years. And I just hope that the council and the planning commission goes for quality instead of quantity and dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else present that wishes to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, do we have any emails before the meeting? I think, is anyone on the phone that wishes to speak at citizen comments tonight? Okay. This is the last opportunity to participate by the public in this meeting tonight. We will close that off and move to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Just the one thing I wanted to pass along. Today, I got three emails in that were very complimentary of our public work staff, each for a different reason, but each indicative of the high level of service that our people give to our citizens. All three emails praised different people for being over and above in their helping us to the citizen when the citizen made an inquiry and had a problem. So I just wanted the staff to know that we very much appreciate that and certainly our citizens appreciate that. Three emails in one day, all positive, all thankful for the staff that we have. So thanks for taking the time to send those in. Clerk, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We'll move on to the Alderman then, again, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
No comments this evening.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
I have one. This weekend, our state passed a very sobering milestone. According to the statistics that we have, on Sunday, the 20,000th Illinois resident died of COVID. That's in less than a year. On a personal note, I must tell you that my great aunt was one of them. She died on Sunday of COVID. So if you could all join me in a moment of silence to honor Lily Blessent and all the others that we have lost this terrible pandemic, and to all those who have lost a friend or a family member during this tragic time, I would appreciate that. and to all those who have lost a friend or a family member during this tragic time, I would appreciate that.
Certainly, very sorry for your loss. We'll take a moment to recognize your loss and the loss of others. Thank you, Alderman. Anything else?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Crishell.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Very good. And Alderman Wilson.
No comment.
Thank you. Move on then to City Administrator, John.
Thank you. As I was shoveling the driveway for the, I think, a couple hundredth time this weekend, this morning, over the long weekend, we had a holiday Monday, it occurred to me that spring is not super far away, and I'm going to keep hanging on to that hope. So just let's stay focused on mid-March. March 21st is the start of spring, even though it's February, we have a lot of snow out there. So that's the image I'm going to hold. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney, Brooke.
I have no report. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Certainly. Thank you. I move to approve the agenda for the February 16th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Alderman Davalos, second. And I would like to take off an item at the right time.
Sure, this would be the time. Alderman, go right ahead.
I would like to take off Item C.
Anyone else wish to make an alteration to the agenda? Hearing none, do the motioner and seconder agree to that change?
Motioner agree.
Seconder agrees.
Very good. Okay, so we have the consent agenda as amended. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda as amended has been approved. We'll move on then to the approval of two sets of minutes. Alderman Widener, did you wish to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the February 1st, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2021 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Again, a motion and a second. Any discussion of those minutes, please speak up. Hearing none, we'll have another roll call then. Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Abstained, I was absent.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended for this evening, Item 6A, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O2021-05, approving the disposal of surplus property owned by the city of Warrenville. B, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and pass resolution R2021-09, extending the duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the city council. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2021-11, waiving competitive bidding and approving the contract with Waterwell Solutions Illinois LLC to replace a motor ad well number 10 in the amount of $35,645.50. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and authorize staff to advertise for bids for the 2021 road program prior to formal approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget. F, receive and file minutes of the bicyclist and pedestrian advisory commission meeting held on December 8th, 2020. G, receive and file minutes of the bicyclist and pedestrian advisory commission meeting held on January 12th, 2021. H, receive and file minutes of the plan commission and zoning board of a fields meeting held on February 4th, 2021. I, receive and file report of invoices paid up to February 10th, 2021 in the amount of $212,030.77. J, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before March 1st, 2021 in the amount of $148,898.18. And K, receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of January 2021 in the amount of $2,264.30. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda as amended and read?
Alderman Widener approves, approves the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Alderman Davalos, second.
Okay, motion and a second, thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The consent agenda as amended has been approved. We will now return to Item 6C. Alderman Davalos, did you wish to bring that forward?
Yes, I, I will bring that forward. I'd like to make a motion to accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2021-10, approving a five-year franchise agreement with Groot Industry Incorporated for residential waste and recycling collection and disposal services to begin May 1st, 2021. You want me to go forward? Want me to start?
Second, Alderman Berry.
Okay, we have a second. Alderman Berry, now we'll have discussion. And yes, we could begin with you, Alderman Davalos.
Sorry. Yes, I, I'm in favor of this, but I just wanted to take just a moment to make a couple of points. I spent probably many of you have too, a lot of time, really good time, talking to residents about this proposal and trying to explain some of the finer details and misconceptions that are out there. So I want to make just two quick points. One is, I'm not really talking to the Alderman because they already know all this, and so does the staff, but for people that are going to listen out there on YouTube and on Channel 10, we cannot keep the same program that we have. It is not being offered by Waste Management, which is our current provider, or any of the other providers that we talk to. Sticker programs alone, without a monthly fee, are not going to be around much longer and probably, like, soon won't be long. So if we want a sticker program, we'd have to be with a monthly fee. So that's the first pull on the ground. The, the second, actually, it's three points. The, the second point I want to make is that we have 30% of our residents that use toters now, that do not use the sticker program, that use the toters. And so, as I don't know about everyone else, but probably the same, as I make a decision and read over this information, I'm thinking of both of those groups. And that's how staff presented it to us, both, both plans, and we looked at prices. And Groot does not do the stickers for us, but they have a very, very reasonable toter program that will actually save current toter, people that use that program, you know, up to like between $8 and $12. So it's a reason, it's, it's more that they'll save than, than the people with the stickers. And so we had to think of both of those programs. And if we went with the suggested program for stickers, it's not a very good deal for the people with the toter. So I think that went into some of the decision-making. And then the biggest thing I talked to people about was, is this all toter program going to mess up or the recycling program? So that people don't recycle as much? Because a lot of people are concerned, as are all of we, I believe. And it, and so is staff. We really are interested in all this stuff. And the representative from Groot explained their program and talked about less contaminated recycle. And I had a very good discussion today with, with Assistant City Administrator Christina White about this issue. And she's, she has more information on this than I do. So Christina, could I ask you to maybe summarize that and share some of that information that you found? And then that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Alderman. Christina?
Thank you. So as Alderman Davalos just mentioned, when we had Josh talk about, Josh Mulner from Groot talk about the program last week, he did mention that they see some success with the cart program because there is less of an incentive to potentially contaminate the recycling with waste, with food products, because you're not looking at it as, at it as an additional cost with the sticker program. I've heard similar comments from our current hauler Waste Management that they've seen some success with recycling through the cart program. And I've heard that from other organizations and other colleagues I've spoken to through this process. But ultimately, it's going to come down to continuing education, continuing putting out information in our newsletter, on the Facebook feed about proper recycling. There is recycling contamination that goes on currently within the community. And the fact of the matter is that the, the entities that accept the recycling have gotten much more strict about what can be recycled. And if there's too much contamination, the entire, entire amount of recycling that we would submit gets thrown away essentially. So it is about education. There is a lot of information out there, but there is a lot of opportunity for contamination if residents aren't sure about what to recycle. There are, there is information both on the current recycling program with Waste Management, as well as what Groot will be offering through their website. And we will continue to publish that information and encourage proper recycling and trying to simplify the recycling program so residents can be successful in their recycling efforts.
Thank you, Christina. We'll go through then the rest of Alderman, the, the, beginning with Alderman Goodman for additional comments or questions.
Thank you. I have two. First of all, I've heard from a lot of residents on this issue, and I expect that as we begin our education program about the transition, I will probably hear from a lot more. The clarifications that Alderman Davalos offered are very helpful, and I've been repeating those a lot. But my hope is, and then one thing I keep running into with some of the, I think it might be called aspirational recyclers, people who recycle things that they think should be recyclable, or that they would hope somebody could recycle, but which are not actually accepted by the recycling program. And in some cases, they used to be. You know, when we first started our recycling program here in Warrenville, anything that had that triangular symbol on it was accepted. And those rules have changed over the years. So my hope is that because this program is going to be a little disruptive, because we will have some new bins, that there will be a recognition among the residents that a change is happening, there are going to be some new rules to learn, and maybe they will learn about the new to them, although I suspect existing recycling rules that are a fact of life in the waste hauling industry right now. My second question is from Assistant City Administrator White. I know that one of the questions I had for Groot Representative last night, we had to do with whether the, the limited 35 gallon cart option would just continue to be available for seniors, or if it could be made available more widely to people who don't mind restricting the amount of waste. I've gotten a lot of questions about this. The paperwork that we have here, according to franchise agreement attachment, A still labels all of those smaller bins for seniors only. So I guess my question for you is, were you able to negotiate that change with Groot? And if not, is that something we could do?
Christina?
Thank you. I'm going to start, and then Josh is actually on the line, so I'm going to ask him to supplement anything that I missed. We did talk about it quite a bit last week after the meeting, and they did go back and look at the possibility of including a 35 gallon cart option for non-seniors who might live alone or just have limited recycling and garbage that they're putting out every week. The challenge with that is that the pricing model that Groot used to come up with their cart service pricing was based on certain assumptions of how many 35 gallon cart options there would be versus the 65 and the 95. I'm going to leave it there and ask Josh to pick up from there, the, some of the challenges that they expressed with, with offering an additional low-cost option.
Josh, are you on the line?
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. No, thank you, Christina. Thank you, Board. The conversation we had, obviously, when we kind of put this proposal together and all the rates within, it was built on a puzzle, so to speak, in terms of revenue we think we needed in order to successfully implement the contract. So if we were to change or add, then that changes the underlying assumptions and the rates that we've proposed. So in having that conversation with Christina, it, it was a scenario where we would have to basically increase the other rates to account for it. And I don't want to speak for Christina, but it sounded like that was something maybe if you were to lose some of the savings that we initially gave on the existing rates, that it would kind of, I guess, move this in a direction that they weren't willing to go down. So it would have been a change to the, the, all the rates existing that we proposed. So I guess, I guess that's the answer to the question.
Thank you, Josh. Back to you, Alderman Goodman.
Okay, well, that's disappointing because a few of the people that I've spoken to in the last week wanted to know about this. And I told them I thought you were working on it, it might be available to them. So I think when I look around at some of the households that I know of here in Warrenville, you know, a single person living by themselves is going to generate a lot less trash than, you know, a multifamily household that's headed by a senior. So who gets the senior discount and who doesn't? Seems like it should just be determined by the amount of trash that the household produces instead of by anybody's age.
Well, to add to that, if, if I could, I mean, you know, our thought was, included in the conversation with Christina, was out of those that would utilize the 35 gallon cart, would have obviously reduced volume, but a significant portion, you know, of the city, of that group would be already by default seniors typically. So the difference between even someone who had a sticker or two a month was, you know, it was, was less than a dollar in terms of difference. So in terms of that and the convenience of not having to go buy stickers and then having that extra capacity every once in a while when you need it, when you have gatherings, when you have parties, when you have holidays, I think is a significant advantage, I would say, for the current program.
Okay, well, thank you for considering the, the change.
And also, we've, we've renegotiated contracts, mid-contract before. So if, if for some reason this or anything pops up where we think we can kind of retool or readdress, we're always willing to come to the table and have that conversation. Just because the contract's five years doesn't mean we have to wait four and a half to talk about it. So we're always open to have that discussion and come to the table.
I appreciate that. And I think as we do the education about this new program and we get, I imagine, a lot more comments from residents, we'll have more information about how they expect to use the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, and thank you, Josh. Alderman Crishell, question or comment?
Yeah, just, I mean, I've also heard from residents, and Alderman Davalos did a great job summarizing. I just want to kind of break it down even further and reiterate what we have today is going away. And if we wanted the same level of service, even for sticker service, the base rate plus even one week of stickers would be more expensive than this cart service. So just to be clear. And then also, I'm a, I'm a converted cart subscriber myself, and the, the, the ease and not running around on Sunday night to find somewhere that's open that has stickers is well worth the, the, the conversion. And it's actually less expensive than what we're currently paying for cart service as well. So I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And I would just piggyback on that with a reminder that this program, if it's approved by the council this evening, will take effect May 1st. And so don't buy stickers now in anticipation of needing them in July, because they won't work at that point. So remember that the current program ends at the end of April, and the new program begins May 1st. Additional comments or questions, Alderman Widener?
Thank you. And thank you to Christina for leading us through this process. She did a very thorough job. I'm going to be converting to the carts, so I look forward to that. And also, you know, I, composting and recycling can be confusing as far as And also, you know, composting and recycling can be confusing as far as what to do. And I think there's a real learning curve with particularly recycling, and it seems like everything carries a recycling symbol. And we're lucky to have in Addison, an award-winning nonprofit called Scars, whose director's Kay McKean. And I know Kay has teamed up, I think, with maybe even Josh, and done educational programs in different communities, at libraries and things like that, leading people through the process of how to best get rid of their extra recyclables and who takes them and what can be put in on a weekly basis in the city's recycling program, and what alternatives there are for other things, you know, through in the community, you know, electronics and books and different kinds of things. There are so many things that are recyclable these days. And I think, you know, it might be great for the library or somehow for the city to link up with Kay McKean. And maybe, you know, Josh could be there too, to help people understand the ins and outs of proper recycling, because I think there is a lot of mixing, and then the recycling doesn't work, and they have to throw the whole bundle of recyclables out if it's not done in a thorough, you know, way. So that's all my comments. And again, Ms. White, thank you for your research and documentation.
Thank you, Alderman. And Josh, back to you just for a moment. As I recall from the discussion at our committee meeting, Groot does have an education program with door hangers and other ways of making sure that people understand what is recyclable and what is not recyclable. Is that correct?
Yeah, on the educational side, we've really moved away from, and I may be repeating myself from the last meeting, but from just kind of loads of words on a paper and really moved towards pictures in terms of doing the do's and don'ts. We really worked over the last two years to kind of simplify that messaging. So that's something we would look to add, and, you know, assuming we get approval tonight, it's something I'll follow up with Christina and her staff about, a draft brochure, which would include kind of the do's and don'ts, including those pictures and do's and don'ts. So definitely a good start to having that conversation and something we'll provide for village staff for review before we send out.
Thank you.
Alderman Wilson, comment or question?
No comment, no question.
Thank you. Alderman Anderson?
I just want to echo, I think Alderman Davalos' three points were really well said. And for those that are, that may struggle with this decision, I think really thinking through the points that she made will hopefully be helpful. I don't think we, as a council and staff, can underestimate this will be a decent amount of change, and that we need to make sure we put the energy into the communication and the rollout, and be patient with those that this ends up being an emotional conversation around. I would encourage any of our citizens that come back to watch this, once they hear about the change, to really take the time and look at the program. I think it's a very competitive program from a pricing standpoint. There's a lot of fairness and a lot of reasonableness would be my observation. And then secondly, I actually think it has a high potential to be advancing our waste program beyond our current state. I think there's a contemporadiness that Groot has put together here and has a real opportunity to benefit the city as a whole. My one question, we talked about last meeting to Administrator White, for those that may have already done a bulk purchase and missed the point of not to do that, have we thought about, will there be any support for those individuals?
Good question. Christina?
That is still something we're working on internally. But Finance Director Dollstrand did inform me, and I just want to remind the council that we have been telling individuals coming to the counter to buy stickers and discouraging them from buying in bulk for the last few weeks and probably a few months now. But we are talking internally about what to do with excess stickers and how to handle that. We just haven't come up with a plan yet. We will come back to a committee of the whole in the probably near future, next month, to talk about our options.
Good. No further comments.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer?
Just thank you. The, all the comments and correspondence I've had, we're all in support of the sticker program, but it's hard to look at that as a value based on what the charges for the bulk container. I mean, you don't have to buy too many stickers to pay for the container. And it's a much neater, better way of doing business, so I have to support it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
I am definitely in favor of the totter program. As many of you know, I live in Emerald Green, and we have used Groot for a number of years, but we do not have the totter program. And we have white garbage bags everywhere, black garbage bags everywhere, and we are limited to what time we can put them out because of all the animals are very close to the river. And I wish that Josh would be able to get with the board at Emerald Green and get them to convert to this program, because I think it's an excellent program. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And I agree that this is going to be an improvement. The transition time will be problematic. It always is. Some people will save money, some people might see costs go up a little bit, but every single program like this has winners and losers. I hate to use those terms, but there's no perfect program. There's no program that everyone's going to agree to. I think the Groot program that's being presented tonight is a good program for the city going forward. I think they will make their best effort to make sure that it's successful. And I think Josh made a good point to understand that their pricing depends on certain assumptions of what the use is going to be, and they have to meet those assumptions, or they can't make money, in which case they can't provide the service for us. So we have to keep in mind that this is a business, and while we want it to run well and want it to serve the community, the people that provide this service have to make a profit in order for that to happen. So that's all I have to add. So I think we're ready. Oh, we have one more addition from Christina.
Thank you. If I could just make two last comments on the Groot program. Should the council vote to move forward, which it sounds like that's where it's going, I do want to just ask everybody to, in the public, to be patient with staff. We are going to put out a lot of information. We're going to do everything we can to get in touch with everyone. Groot, Josh and I have already discussed different options for getting information out to the community, but this is a significant change, both in the hauler and the program. So we understand there's going to be some confusion and concerns. We will work with everyone to answer questions and do our best to get the information out as quickly as possible. My other comment is, I noticed Vaughn Kirchner is on the call. He is our representative with Waste Management currently, and I just wanted to also say that we've had a good relationship with Waste Management over the years. They have always been a partner with the city in terms of recycling questions and issues and working with us to put out information, as well as addressing any issues that came up with the community, with residents and customers. So I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge that Waste Management has been a good partner with us for the last few years, and thank Vaughn for his work with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? If so, please raise your hand or speak up. Seeing and hearing none, may have a roll call, please. We don't have a picture. Okay. Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Josh, thank you. We look forward to working with Groot, and I think it's going to work.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, and we look forward to working with you.
Great. Okay, we'll move on then to the regular agenda. We have a couple of items. We have number 7A. Would someone like to make that motion, please, so we can have discussion?
Ms. Alderman Goodman, I will make the motion to accept the staff recommendation and postpone consideration of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation to waive the competitive bidding and approve the purchase of a new street sweeper until the March 1st, 2021 city council meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Any lead into this discussion, City Administrator?
Thank you. The information in the packet, it just simply, there were some very good questions and concerns raised at the committee of the whole meeting, and staff is in the process of responding to all of those. There is more information that Public Works Director Kukler included in a memo, but additionally, there's some other financial information we'd like to have available to be able to adequately answer your questions. We did have the one meeting, staff did, last Friday with the Long Range Financial Planning Group, which includes Alderman Goodman and Wilson. There's a meeting this coming Thursday, two days, with Alderman Widener and Crishell on the capital maintenance replacement fund and the plan and funding. So I think that will help to vet those issues. We always get really good feedback from the Alderman looking at things slightly differently than staff may at times. And so we prefer, well, we think it's better if we wait two more weeks, we can answer all the questions, and hopefully then give you all the best opportunity to make an informed decision.
Thank you, John. So this motion is just postponed, making the decision, so additional information is available to the Alderman. Okay, let's see if anyone has questions or comments on the motion, beginning with Alderman Anderson?
No questions.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Crishell?
I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Wilson?
No questions.
Very good. We are ready then for a roll call.
Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Alderman Goodman, did I miss you?
Yes, you missed me, but I have no comments.
Okay, I apologize for that. Now we're ready. I didn't hear anybody else holler at me, so I guess I'm okay. Okay. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. Emily, motion carries, so we will revisit this item on March 1st at our next city council meeting then. Very good. We have item 7B, the FY 2021 financial update and discussion. John, would you like to lead that off?
Sure. The information, it's in the packet, the memo that provides the latest, most up-to-date information about the, again, the market sensitive, the most market-sensitive revenues of the city that are affected the most by the pandemic and the COVID closures or restrictions. And as you'll note, it's, again, a little less bad than it has been, but from what it should be or what the budget projections were, we are down quite a bit still. The leveling off is a good sign, but we've still got a ways to go to get back to something that we'll call normal. There's hope with all the things going on as you read, if you watch the media or see the updates that come from the Health Department at the county and other folks. There's some stabilizing of the COVID infections, and the vaccines certainly seem to be taking effects. Those are all good things, and there's some loosening of restrictions by the state of Illinois, so restaurants and businesses can be more productive and more open than they had been. That noted also as a reminder, this is not, this memo is not intended to reflect the entire city budget, reflects those volatile revenues, and does comment on the general fund overall. As I noted earlier, with the last item on the agenda, the long-range financial planning folks are working with Kevin and I, our Finance Director and I, reviewing our projections for revenues. This is a little off the topic of COVID-related, but it related to the fiscal situation overall, working to help us review, or they're reviewing our projections for next year's revenues and looking at things so that we will have a better, I think, more solid recommendations that go into the budget. But some of those things are still ongoing. This is, I guess, needless to say, a very unusual year and circumstances, so we're a little further behind than normal in past years at least in getting those projections and revenues together. But you will see the budget booklet on March 1st that will have all that laid out, and then we'll have a lot of discussions as we go forward. I just think it's appropriate to have a reminder about the budget process because it certainly ties into all of this. And this memo gives a snapshot of where we are, or the most recent information of where we have been fiscally on these types of revenues, but we're using that as part of the projections and how to project and forecast revenues for next year. And I'll leave it to see if the Finance Director has any other comments, and we'll be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Kevin, any comments on the memo? You're muted, Kevin. Still? We've got a problem.
Yeah, he's waving.
Okay, he's saying, go ahead without me. Technology has defeated us yet again.
I thought I heard him.
All right, we'll go to the council then for questions on the memo or the situation that you might have or comments, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
No questions. I just want to say thank you for the financial update that came with the weekly report. I found that very, very helpful and appreciated the time and effort that went into creating that. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
I don't have any questions on this, but I would like to also say that, like Alderman Anderson, that packet that was on the weekly report really was great. I mean, I thought maybe it was going to replace the budget part of it. It was so good. So unfortunately, I know we'll still get the big books, I guess, but it was very helpful, and I read it over and over, especially in light of the street sweeper. I got a lot more information on the CMRP. So all this together takes so much time, so I just want to say thank you. It's so helpful.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. Yeah, my first question is about the supplemental request for CARES Act reimbursements from the county. I know that some large fraction of money that was allocated by the county to the townships has not been spent. I had heard in the past, Winfield Township failed to spend their allocation and does not plan to spend their allocation by the end of February, which I think the deadline was extended to. And I heard today about Milton Township also, basically turning back quite a lot of their allocation to the county. So I wonder if we've been checking with the county regularly about the possibility of any additional funding?
City Administrator Culkeley?
I don't believe that we've checked recently, within the last, I would say, at least four weeks. I would also, I've heard the same things, Alderman. There's some, also, it seems potential loosening of when that money had to be spent and can be reimbursed. Originally, it had to have been spent by December, the end of December, and then you could still apply into January, given some changes in the federal government. And there's possibility that that could change. But we did have our application in for supplemental, so we would have met those requirements. That's one note. But I think that's why some of the other overlapping districts, you cited the townships and some others, may not have been able to spend the money in time, so it may still be available. The county, last I had an update, had substantial expenditures of their own that could be used, that money could be applied for. So I don't, I think it's unlikely we're going to get any supplemental money, but we will certainly check and find out what the status is of this week to clarify that. But I don't want to raise false hopes. We thought originally that there was more of an opportunity. At this point, I just, I'm not sure that there is anymore, but we'll check.
Thank you, John. Back to you, Alderman.
Okay, yeah, that is true. I had heard that there were additional requests that came in from the sheriff's office in particular. So we'll see what the county decides to do. I think they still have some flexibility, and the final decisions may not have been made yet, I think. I think checking with them is worthwhile. But you're right, maybe we shouldn't get our hopes up too much. Secondly, I want to reiterate what's been said about this fantastic financial update, the level of detail and the ease of understanding it. Very impressive, great job to the finance department, and especially Director Dollstrand. But yeah, it's a, it's a tough picture. There's no two ways around it. We are in, we're in some difficulty here. And yeah, the, the overall revenues that are market-based that you're summarizing look just lightly better than last time. But you see numbers like amusement tax revenue per January is $1. I mean, you see a number like that and you just kind of... Anyway.
Cringe isn't even the right word.
Yes, cringe is not, cringe is not even the right word. That's, that's, that's a good way of putting it. I, I know it's very difficult to project what will happen next. So I appreciate the work that staff has put into that. But we're, we're in a pretty daunting place right now. So looking through the details like this and being able to see the different ways in which we might need to address it. And in particular, I would say the hotel motel tax fund and the CMRP are areas of some very big ongoing concern. And, you know, my own experience with the EMRP would beg me add that to the list, even though I know that's not focus of these updates. But we need to take a very sober look at where we are when we move into this budget process and be very responsible not to spend money that we don't have right now in hope for improvement in the future so that we can keep funding our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Crishell?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener?
No questions. Thank you for the excellent report.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson?
I have no additional comments.
Very good. I guess that concludes discussion of that item. We have nothing under unfinished business. We have no new business on the agenda and no need for a session this evening. I would certainly, at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Okay.
Motion by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Widener to adjourn. May have a roll call, please. Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you all for your attendance this evening and for your attention. And we will see you the next time in exactly one week. Actually, not, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. We get a Monday off.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.